Um, so President Furman, um Karen and I were just discussing, um, we're not really sure how you want to kind of format, um, the interviews. Sometimes with interviews, um, it's kind of formatted so that the other interviewees aren't able to see the other interviews. Um, can you just let us know how you want that to roll out?
It's against, uh, public open meeting law to just, to not allow, um, people to attend this meeting.
Okay.
So I know that's been the practice, uh, was practice of other years, um, but Attorney House made it clear to me that we cannot exclude people from listening to the meeting.
Awesome. Sounds good. Okay, good. So my, my impulse was right, but I was like, I, I, I better make sure. I don't want to be wrong. I'm tired.
Um, I think we've got who's going to be here this evening. Um, so I think I will, uh, go ahead and call this meeting to order and Karen, if you can call and roll.
Yes, President Furman.
President.
Vice President Curry.
Here.
Alder Bennett. Alder Conklin.
President.
Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Thank you. Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Abbas.
Here.
You have Quorum.
Great. Thanks so much. Um, I don't know. I know we had somebody registered, but they weren't registered to speak. I don't know if that has changed because I don't have registration up. Does anybody know? We have no registrants, uh, looking to speak.
Correct.
Okay, great. Um, so then, um, uh, that, that helps with that, that we don't need to go through the IT stuff. Um, I think I would just say to the applicants, um, that I'd ask that you leave your camera off, um, unless, uh, you are being interviewed, um, just to make it a little bit easier. Um, uh, and then I'll go into more details in a moment. So our first item is public comment. Um, uh, does any members of the board have any disclosures and recusals? All right. Not seeing any, um, I'm gonna, uh, so we'll go into, um, I'll, I'll explain a little about how our interviewing process will work this evening and then we'll go into the candidate, candidate interviews. Um, all members of CCEC, uh, this morning, um, received, um, a copy of, uh, the procedure for this evening, um, as well as, um, um, information on the questions that will be asked. All the candidates received that last week. Um, it mirrors what we have done in the past. Um, so, um, it's, it's a similar process. Um, I want to say the candidates this evening, welcome. Um, thank you for applying. I've been in your shoes in the past, so I know it's not an easy process and, uh, takes a lot to put yourself out there, but, um, appreciate you volunteering for this and, um, and your willingness to serve. Um, tonight we're going to have two rounds, um, round one, um, we will, I, I will ask, um, three questions and you have a total of five minutes to answer that. Um, members of CCEC will then, um, uh, use our ranking software. Um, if you did not get an invite, um, please, please let me know. Um, Alder Abbas, you should have an invite, um, since you are, um, will be voting this evening since Alder Bennett is not with us. Um, after, um, round one, um, we will go ahead and, um, tally up, um, who the top three, uh, uh, people, uh, are, and then we will move on to round two. Um, where, um, we will ask questions. You'll have, uh, a total of five minutes per question. And then from there, um, we will also do a ranking score and, um, come up with a recommendation. Um, if you have any questions, um, you can certainly let me know when the interview starts, um, but hopefully, uh, based on the email that I sent out and, uh, based on, um, uh, for the candidates and based on the fact for CCEC members, um, this is a process that we followed a few times this year. Um, hopefully that's clear. And again, if anybody did not receive, um, uh, the invite or, uh, to, to vote, which was sent around three, three thirty, um, or, or didn't receive that, um, score sheet that was sent. That was just, it's totally being used, um, however you want to use it. There's no actual scoring other than ranking is how we're going to be doing it, uh, for this particular process. Uh, certainly let me know. Um, so with that in mind, I'm going to open up my ranking, uh, uh, sheet and what we will start with our, our first candidate of the, of the evening. Um, Joe, uh, welcome. Are you with us, Joe? Yep, I see Joe. Um, Joe, uh, if you want to go ahead and, uh, turn your camera on. Um, should have the ability to do that and you should have the ability to unmute yourself.
Uh, Joe, I just asked you, um, to turn your camera on. You should have a prompt.
There is. So Joe, you're still muted. We can see you, but you're muted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Joe. Hi. Good evening. Welcome. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll jump right into it. Um, so the, the three questions that would like you to answer is, um, describe your involvement in civic activities. Um, what do you know about this position and, uh, why did you decide to apply?
Okay. Well, first of all, uh, Council President Furman and members of the Executive Committee, I certainly never thought I would ever be in this position again. Sitting here for something like this, but, uh, here we are. So let's have at it. Uh, as you probably saw from my initial application on here, I'm a thirty-one-year resident of District Seventeen. I know it well on here. I built a home about a year after I moved in here and of course I did serve, uh, four terms as a District Seventeen Alder. And the main reason I'm coming forth on this is I really, I hate to say never say never, but I have really no interest in, uh, seeking election this coming April on here, but right now I feel our district were a little bit adrift after the resignation of, uh, Alder Halverson on here. And frankly, there is a lot on the plate for District Seventeen right now. And of course, uh, first of all is the, uh, New Imagination Center, i.e. a branch library, hopefully sited in Ryndale Park. We also have the, uh, Men's Shelter on here, either the temporary one we're just dealing with, which is open and the permanent one on Bartilian. Plus the BRT, the, uh, terminus on our side of town is somewhere right over in District Seventeen on here. And always, always, I stress, public safety on here. More and more people tell me they are just downright scared to go out in the evening hours, driving, let alone even walking in the neighborhood. We just had a bad incident over here three nights ago up on Anniversary Lane. We had someone up there was going door to door trying to, uh, yeah, enter homes up there and the police, we had a presence up there for most of the evening with it. Hopefully the, uh, gentleman was apprehended on there. And of course, the biggest thing on here, I mentioned the Imagination Center, Alder Sam and I have just worked tirelessly on that. That actually goes way back to, uh, probably my first term in two thousand and seven. We are in a library desert out here. Uh, roughly a quarter of Madison really has no library. And we have our beloved Sandberg School out here, a dual immersion school. Have you on here? And there is no magnet library, a companion library nearby for it. Hopefully if we build this new library, this will eliminate the desert on here. And of course, the other thing is there is absolutely no place for any kind of public meetings, neighborhood meetings, anything like that on here. We've been lucky up until a few years ago, we could use Sandberg School. Frankly, they are full to the brim right now. They don't have any room for anybody in the evenings to use it for a public meeting. The best we can do now is to go over to the, uh, youth center over there off in, uh, Wright Street, which really isn't even in our district. So the biggest thing is this branch library we need and we need a huge meeting room with a lot of breakout rooms, possibly a kitchen facility. And if you've seen the library scoping study, we have dozens of different ideas. That's why we call it the Imagination Center. We'd like to put into that. One thing I would like to see is, is some branch city offices possibly out here, but we'll just kind of see how it goes on here. Uh, the plan Men's Shelter out here. I have no problem with that. Uh, I wasn't the Alder, obviously, but frankly, the, uh, original one in the Sabres Building on here, uh, our former Alder did oppose it. I would not have opposed it on here. I know that area too well on there. The nearby land for development, that's been for sale by the Zara family now for over thirty years. Someday sooner or later it will be developed on here. But, uh, quite frankly, the people, the men in the shelter night, they aren't going to be wandering around at East Town at that hour or let alone the food court, which is roughly over a block away. I would have just have let that gone through and possibly we could have advanced the, uh, public market sooner. But I have no problem at all with this permanent one on Bartilian Drive over here with it and I will support that on it. The other thing going back to public safety on here, I also happen to serve on the, uh, Board of Public Works right now, and I did happen to see a list of smaller projects. There are a half a dozen of them. I believe on here are going to pertain to District Seventeen. And if I'm chosen to serve temporarily on here, I certainly want to advance those in the budget, maybe do a budget amendment for it. I don't know. You've got that resume. If I should just, uh, President Furman, uh, read off the list of various things I've done out here.
Um, no, I appreciate that, Joe. You're actually, um, you, you're, you're a little over five minutes, so, um.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't, don't be sorry. Um, that, that, that's where you are now. Um, are there any, um, uh, so thank you. Um, uh, uh, we can do, if anybody has any clarifying questions, it can't be a new question. I, I'd be happy to entertain that, whether it's a CCEC Alder or, uh, another Alder that's here. Um, but really do want to focus on clarifying questions on something maybe Joe said that you want clarified. All right. Not seeing any. Um, thank you so much, Joe. Um, appreciate it. Um, we're, we're going to move on to our next candidate. Um, Blake Duran, um, Blake, I believe you, I saw you a moment ago. Yep. Um, Blake, go ahead and welcome. Uh, same deal. You're going to have, uh, five minutes to answer these three questions. Um, uh, and the questions are, uh, describe your involvement in civic activities. Uh, what do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Well, I'm a, I'm a practicing attorney, so I operate specifically in the third branch of government for better or for worse, uh, quite a bit all week long. Um, I'm not really a neighborhood meeting guy, but I do stay up on current events. Um, I've written letters to the editor. I'm a cranky person like that from time to time. Um, I talk to my neighbors a lot. I keep abreast of the issues, see what's going on, watching, you know, watch what happens, uh, with various developments and, and the stuff that's going on in the city. Um, the position, um, I have friends that aren't Alders in the city of Madison, but in other locations. So I, I generally understand what, uh, a council does and, and what an alderman does and what their role is. Um, meeting with constituents, uh, probably serving on a couple, uh, additional committees or subcommittees. I served on the Wisconsin Board of Bar Examiners for six years and was vice chair for, for a couple of years there. Um, so I have a, a general idea of how that, all that stuff works. And then the reason I applied to the position, uh, candidly, uh, is that I was thinking about running anyways. I wasn't really satisfied with my, uh, previous alderperson. Um, I had placed a couple of phone calls to him. Um, again, with the letter to the editor theme, I'm, can sometimes be a little cranky, um, and then I never got a return call, uh, never called me back once. And I thought that that was, uh, that's a big, uh, a big taboo for me to not communicate with your constituents. And so when I saw what happened there, when this opportunity arose, um, I kind of talked about it with my neighbors a little bit jokingly and they're like, you know, go do it, you know, that's a, that's a good idea. Let's give it a go. Um, and so, uh, I tossed my hat into the ring and, and here I am this evening.
Great. Thank you, Blake. Um, are there any, uh, clarifying questions from Alders? Not seeing any. Uh, thank you very much, Blake. Um, our next, uh, candidate, uh, this evening is, uh, Sabrina Madison. Um, welcome Sabrina. Hi, um, like, like our other candidates, um, you have five minutes to answer the following three questions. Um, describe, but your involvement in civic activities. Uh, what do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Thank you. First of all, can you hear me? Okay. Perfect. All right. So I describe my involvement in civic engagements in two categories. The first would be civic engagement with city government. In this area, I just simply like to highlight that I currently chair the city's economic development committee and I chair the mayor's task force for a guaranteed income. Both of these roles provide opportunity for me to always strategically bring both my lived experience as well as the needs and voices of other historically marginalized people to the table in a way that works to increase both social and economic mobility for Madisonians who have historically not been genuinely included. The second would be my choosing over and over again to be an actively involved community member who has worked consistently, consistently, consistently to elevate the voices, issues and concerns of various populations of people choosing to call Madison home, especially communities of color. From serving on the Board of Directors for United Way to hosting poetry writing workshops for the Men's Shelter way back in twenty twelve, my engagement has both been inclusive and transformational. So when continuing to address historic barriers faced by Black and Brown Madisonians, one quick example of how that is shown up in my leadership is when I volunteered to serve as an advisory committee member for the city's market ready program. I could have stopped there, but instead I went on to host several successful Black business expos that, you know, but hosting both of those, serving on that committee and, uh, hosting the expos, I was able to not only help ensure that my voice and entrepreneurs who look like me, but other entrepreneurs of color had their needs addressed while the expos provided the opportunity for them to have exposure while increasing their sales and customer base. So I've worked collaboratively and effectively to take on and create opportunities to create the kind of city that each of us, which I'm sure each of you are all proud to call, you know, this place home. And both of these civic engagement areas have led me to actively listen, to attend and to provide testimony to a number of city meetings over the years. So even though Alders, I want you to understand that I firmly understand the role and know the full description of the Alder role. I still want to just highlight a few things I know about the position. So the basics of serving as Alder includes conducting yourself in a professional manner, attending and participating at council meetings, being available to constituents. And at the core of the Alder's job is to advocate for your district and your constituents in the city processes to serve on city committees as appointed and be an active, prepared and equal participant as well as participating fully in the process of developing and approving the annual city budget. Some of the more important responsibilities include to act as a liaison between the communities, the committees you serve on and the council and sponsor legislation for those committees. It also includes advancing policy issues important to the district and the city. And of course, helping making sure city government is accessible and welcoming to all Madison residents. So the highest responsibility of the Alder is the fiduciary responsibility to approve a balanced annual city budget in a way that reflects the values of our city and evaluates and creates opportunities for those who have historically been marginalized. So I applied to serve in this role because given my civic involvement and my lived experience and my commitment to years of servant leadership, I feel that serving as an Alder and serving as an elected official is a natural next step for me to effectively continue, continue to impact the future of our city, a city that I have strategically chosen to call home for over fifteen years. So stepping up when there's an opportunity and an ability to create a better city is a responsibility that I've taken seriously for years and something I feel very passionate about. And at this time, I feel like, you know, I'm at a position to be able to do so. So that's that.
Thank you, Sabrina. Are there any clarifying questions from Alders? Okay, not seeing any. We'll go on to our next candidate, uh, Anne Murphy Long. I, I apologize if I did not pronounce your name, um, uh, uh, well, can you, can you, can you, can you correct me?
You're fine. Anne Murphy Long is fine.
Okay.
The last name kind of, um, messes people up. It is just a short all, just like you think it is.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome. You will have, um, five minutes, uh, like our other candidates to answer this question, uh, the, these three questions, which is, uh, describe your involvement in civic activities. Um, what do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Well, great. So thank you for taking the time to speak with me tonight. So, um, I have lived in this area for, we bought a house back here, uh, in two thousand and five. So I've lived in this district for quite a while. I raised two kids here. Um, I enjoy this area. I enjoy the community. Um, I've met a lot of my neighbors. I'm from, as with my civic engagements, um, I spent a lot of time, uh, as a member of the Parent Teacher Organization, which again allowed me to meet a lot of the families, uh, play a part in the community, um, really work in a community that, um, frankly, uh, that was the way I got to know it and got to understand people and got to understand what goes on here. Um, and also where I grew up, um, I grew up in a very, uh, white area in this state and it was such an experience for me to learn about the community and learn how to learn with other families and, um, get the experience and having my children have that experience of growing up in a place that had so much more diversity than when I had as a child. Um, and so I've spent a lot of time working in with them. I was their endowment coordinator for the school for several years. Uh, so I did fundraising events for them and I, um, managed the process of dispersing those funds through our applications to our, uh, teachers and staff members there. Um, I was the president of that PTA, um, did a lot of fundraising, did a lot of community outreach, arranging movie nights and other things that we could bring the city, um, community members into this, uh, school as well. Uh, I've worked in, um, various grassroots activities. I was a part of United Wisconsin, uh, back, um, uh, over a decade ago now. Um, so I learned a lot about grassroots activism, getting involved, how you manage that, how you can listen to people and, um, guide those conversations and have productive conversations. Uh, and a lot of my civic activity now is, uh, around voting activism, uh, voter rights. Uh, I have been, uh, election official since two thousand and four. I've been a chief inspector for several years. Um, I have worked a lot of early voting to make sure that we have access for everybody in our area, in our community to, um, to vote and doing a lot of that outreach. Uh, I also have worked with Dane County to, um, provide some transparency with our elections and have, uh, been kind of their lead auditor for their, uh, election tabulator equipment. So I run an audit after every election for them, um, and, uh, kind of, and produce a report so they can, so we can provide more transparency to community about our, um, our voting rights and our voting activities. Uh, my role, uh, what I believe this role is, is to represent the constituents of this district. Uh, and to the best of my ability, um, participate in, uh, all of the work that the city does, um, whether it is budgets, whether it is, um, representing on committee, uh, on committees in this role. Um, I know a lot of the work is not that exciting. Sometimes it's a lot of, um, sitting in meetings and talking. Um, but that's what I'm here for. I, um, overall, I would like to serve um, as this representative because I do regret that I didn't run in twenty twenty. Um, I wanted to and then decided at the time with the child going off to college soon wasn't the right time for me to bring this on. Um, but I feel that this was an opportunity that I couldn't miss. Um, and so that's why I stepped forward. I have no political aspirations after this. My job is I want to serve in public service in the public sector, employing my whole life, uh, or my whole professional career. And I really do want to give back to the community, um, that I have known for the last, uh, twenty years. I think that's it.
Thank you. Um, are there any clarifying questions from Alders? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you so much. Um, our next applicant is, um, Bill Turnquest. Uh, see you, Bill. Bill, go ahead and, um, there we go. Um, and you go ahead and mute yourself. Um, you will have, um, five minutes to answer, um, uh, the following three questions. Describe your involvement in civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
All right. Um, well, I appreciate your time, President Furman and the rest of the committee members for, uh, your consideration with my application. Um, to start, uh, I've worked in public safety, public service, um, since two thousand and five, but even before that I worked at the, uh, DeForest Public Library. Um, before my role in fire and EMS, uh, moving forward, eventually becoming a, uh, a paramedic, um, running with multiple services in Dane County and eventually ending up at my current role, um, as a communicator at the Public Safety Communication Center. Um, you know, I've been involved in outreach as far as fire and EMS, whether that's blood pressure clinics, open houses. Um, I've gone to daycares and dressed up in the full bunker gear to show kids, don't be scared of the big, uh, guy, the Darth Vader breathing apparatus that you hear, um, that sort of thing. And I've really enjoyed that. And it's a very fulfilling position and um, I kind of want to continue that, working as an Alder in a different role. My responses have mostly been in the, uh, reactionary. Someone calls, they need help. Um, we have to either respond or dispatch. Um, and I look forward to maybe participating in a more, uh, proactive role to maybe address some of these issues and some of the concerns from the callers that I speak to on a daily basis throughout the city and county. Um, and perhaps, you know, maybe kind of work towards addressing their issues before they feel like they have to um, respond or call out for some sort of emergency or non-emergency assistance. Um, I've also served as a poll worker, uh, previously, um, with one of the presidential elections. Um, as far as what I know about this position, um, not very in-depth, to be perfectly honest, um, but I do understand that I would have to attend the city council meetings, probably serve on committees. Most importantly, probably reaching out, community outreach, um, with citizens of Madison and, uh, residents and constituents in my district or in District Seventeen rather. Um, and again, uh, just to reiterate, I decided to apply because um, I do feel a sense of accomplishment and pride, um, in my roles previously as, you know, work as a firefighter, paramedic, serving the community that way. Um, there is pride and accomplishment as well as um, sir, or my current position as communicator and speaking with, uh, citizens of Madison on a daily basis and dealing with their concerns and addressing and helping and, you know, trying to make a difference, um, any way I can. Um, I will say that my current position, uh, does give me a unique look to some of the issues the city has with violence, uh, crime. Uh, one of the other candidates had mentioned, uh, incidents a few days ago in our neighborhood on Anniversary Lane. I was actually working that night and was taking calls from those people, uh, who were concerned about someone prowling around in their backyard and, uh, the police presence and that sort of thing. So I just kind of would like to take some of that and further that in the role, uh, of Alder in the city of Madison, District Seventeen. Um, thank you for your consideration.
Great. And thank you, Bill. Any clarifying questions for Bill? Great. Thank you, Bill. And our final candidate for round six, for the first round that's with us this evening is Amy Browski. And again, I apologize. And I hope that you correct me on your name. So I know it properly.
That's great. Thank you. It's a Bransky. It's, it's actually much worse than it looks. It's very phonetic.
Great. Well, welcome. So you, like, like the other candidates, you'll have five minutes to answer the same three questions, which is, describe your involvement in civic activities. Why did, what do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I've always been very interested in community service. I I participated in community events, both in the communities that I've lived in, as well as the communities that I've worked in. Prior to moving to Madison, I was living in the Twin Cities and I served several terms as the secretary for the City of Richfield's Charter Commission. I also served on the Board of Directors for the Community Action for Suburban Hebbin County, which is a community action agency. But since moving to Madison and purchasing my house in two thousand and seventeen, I got a little more involved here. I testified at the renewal transfer hearings for the Visions nightclub, liquor license, and that was kind of exciting. I actively participated in the community zoning meetings, previous city council meetings, particularly the one regarding the Rindell Park homeless issue. And, and also most recently, I attended the public meeting regarding the Imagination Center and the Rindell Park Master Plan, as well as the, I toured the new location on Zier Road for the men shelter. And some of my activities include involvement with the Dane, Dane County Time Bank. I was a criminal justice professional, I was. And so I was always involved and really interested in restorative justice. So when I volunteered for the Time Bank, I worked with restorative justice and juvenile that were sentenced to the court ordered to be involved in restorative justice programming. I also volunteer at Gilda's Club and in my own personal neighborhood, we had a rash. I live in Churchill Heights and got a rash of criminal activities. So I organized a neighborhood group so we could be more aware. And I understand that if chosen, I'll be the representative for my neighbors in District Seventeen. I'll be the voice for my constituents and I realize that I'll need to work with my city council committee members, city staff and special committees to make, to make decisions that will help to keep Madison the city that it is today. And one of the most livable cities in the state. I'll be the voice for the residents here living in District Seventeen and will be tasked with effectively representing them as well as working with other people with, working collaborator, collaboratively with other committee members that have competing interests as well as city officials in order to accomplish our tasks. And I am aware that the next big one is the budget. And why I applied for this position was when I moved to Madison, I chose the city because it was ranked as one of the most livable cities in the United States. In the past seven years, I've attended several community meetings and now it's time for me to get more involved. I enjoy all that Madison has to offer and I really want to give back to my community. I have special interest in the men's shelter as well as the Rindell Park. And I'm interested in being this alderperson because I have the skills and abilities to effectively listen and represent my neighbors and advocating for the best interest of our city.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any clarifying questions for Amy? All right, not seeing any. Thank you, Amy. Thank you again to all of our candidates. I highly, highly recommend, even if you don't make it to the next round, or the ultimate recommendation that you consider joining a committee. If you're considering running in the spring, absolutely still consider running in the spring. And I really do appreciate you coming out and applying for the position this evening. So at this point, I'd ask all CCEC Alders to go ahead and log into the voting software and go ahead and rank the people that you saw this evening. And when you're done, you click that reviewed button. And once we have everybody's results, then I will announce the three people that will go on to round two. And if anybody needs their invitation reset, let me know and I can certainly do that. Alder Heck.
Thanks. Should I have a D seventeen election listed on my pivot page?
Yeah, you may have to just refresh it.
I just did that. I'll try again.
Yeah. While you do that, Alder Boss.
Yeah, I can only email and password. They're asking me to login.
Okay, so you don't have an email and password from previous is the issue or you just don't?
Yeah, I don't remember my password.
Okay.
Is it my console email password?
No, 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 no. But so you need the ability and is there, and I think there should be a reset password button there.
I can do that.
Yep, go ahead and reset that password then.
I was able to reset my password earlier, but I still don't see D seventeen.
Can you click on the actual invite link in your email? I know that that was my issue. I didn't see it because I didn't click on the invite link.
Okay.
It didn't show up just by logging in.
That would be in the pivot invite.
Yeah, so I think the time that was sent was around three forty-one.
So I can click vote.
I think that's.
Oh, now it shows up. Thanks.
Yep. Alder Boss, certainly let me know if you need additional help. I mean, thanks. Great. Go ahead, Alder Figaro.
So then once we do the ranking, we can review and that's it?
Yep, you just, yeah, once you've moved up all the people to that top section and you've moved them around your ranking, you hit that review button and it will show that you've sent in your results. Alder Figaro, are you all set? Because I do see here a star next to your name, which indicates to me that you did pick that, but I don't want to continue unless you're.
Yes.
So you're happy, you're, you're good. Okay, so I've received, looks like according to the tool, everybody has voted. So I just need to click a a button to see the results. Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody. So the, the next, the people that will join us for the third round are Joe Clausian and Murphy Long and Sabrina Madison. And I apologize, I did not do that in alphabetical order or even the ranking order, but those will be the three people that will join us for the next round. So thank, thank you to the other candidates. Again, appreciate it. I will send you some information on learning more about committees and how to run in the spring if you're interested. And we will move on to the next round. And I will also send out a a ballot for, for the next round to CCEC Alders. So to kick off the next round, we will go alphabetically. So we'll start with Joe first, followed by Sabrina, followed by Anne. So Joe, if you want to go ahead and turn your camera on and Alder Figaro Cole, you still have your hand up. Is that a accident? Okay, all right. So we will begin. The first question of the evening will come from Alder Boss.
I hope I'm looking at the right question. So the question is, what's knowledge, skills and resources do you already possess? That's the one. Okay. So Joe, question is, and welcome. What knowledge, skills and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
Okay, well, thank you. And as far as knowledge goes, again, I'll refer back to, I did serve four terms as the alder for District Seventeen, and I had a wide variety of experiences. Obviously, I went through, let's see, eight different budgets during that time, the process. And of course, right now we're approaching the fall budget on the two thousand and twenty-three. As far as skills go on here, I consider myself an excellent communicator, both as far as writing goes and as well as verbal and stuff. I've helped many, many neighborhood meetings in my tenure as a former alder on here and frankly, also with our two neighborhood associations. When you ask about resources on here, number one is I'm retired. I've got the time to devote to this. And as I've said before, I'm not planning on restarting my political career on here. As far as I'm concerned, after the April election, someone else will be in there. Meanwhile, I can go ahead. I can devote total time. I'm not going to be worried about running for reelection, anything like that. And I think as far as those qualities would make me a good interim alder. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Joe. Just to let Alders know, we're going to do clarifying questions at the end. So if there's something that was said, not a new question or something that said that you want clarification for, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that at the end of those, those, the questions that you're asking now. So once Joe is done. So the next question will come from Alder.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Alder Boss.
Yeah, President Furman, I just want to let, if you can let you know, his camera is off. Oh, he's on now. Yeah, I, I was not sure it's by choice, but just in case, if you hit the button.
Thank you, Alder Boss. Thank you, Joe. Our next question is from Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. Hi, Joe.
Hi there.
This is kind of a long question. So if you need me to repeat it at any time, just let me know. And it has a couple of different parts. So my question is, please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion, and how would you model these practices in this assignment? Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion and racial justice.
Okay, you're right. That's a complicated question on here. Well, let's, let's start out with, let's take exclusion and, yeah, I'm sorry, inclusion and equity on here. Anyone can throw those words around. They can talk the talk, but I like to say, hey, I walk the walk. And here's an example of it. I am the longest-serving member of the Madison Parks Foundation. At this time, we're in the process of constructing out one but five totally accessible parks for, say, handicapped residents, whether it's cognitive or physical. And those will be able to, any resident, any age can use those. We're not just talking about it. We built one already at Bridgingham Park and also at Elver Park. After the first of the year, there'll be one going at Brennbaum Park and also Warner. The fifth one, of course, is going to be at Rindell Park on here. And obviously, that's the one I'm most interested in. That's somewhat on hold because of the Imagination Center, just where we're going to put it on there. Another thing I've done as far as equity and inclusion for everyone on here, I'm very proud of through the foundation. We went ahead and we put in a accessible beach mat at Bernie's Beach. That way, people in any kind of wheelchairs, motorized conveniences can actually wheel right up literally to the water's edge on here. Another thing we did is if you look at any dog park, at each one of those, we've installed what's called the two gate system. But that is anyone that's confined to a wheelchair, they go through the first gate, they can shut it. They're safe where their animals are. They can open the second gate, not worry about the animal up getting away from them. It's these little things that really make the big difference on here with it. I want to touch some more on, as far as this branch library goes on here, I serve, let's see, as a member of the Madison Library Foundation as a subcommittee member of what's called the Rindell Park Working Group. There's nothing to me that encourages diversity, inclusion, whatever equity than a branch library. And hopefully now we'll start on that in the next year, provided how the budget process turns out on here. Couple of minor things on here I'm very proud of, working through the Madison Parks Foundation over at the new Glenway Golf Park over there, which just recently opened on here. We've done a lot of community programs and our native heritage on here with the Ho-Chunk Nation on here. They did a wonderful presentation. We sponsored very well-intended just on the history of indigenous, indigenous people in the Madison area. It was very well received. So I like to feel that I don't just talk about stuff. I get out there and get things done. And of course, my big thing in the future is the, our branch library out here. And then along with that, having an accessible park in the same area or there. And I hope that's a pretty good summary of what I've tried to do on here.
Thank you, Joe. Our next question will come from Alder Foster.
Hey, Joe. Give me one second. What are the primary issues facing District Seventeen and what are the biggest issues facing the city?
Right. Okay, well, I'll start with the city first on here. First of all is the budget process on here. The new budgets on here, these are probably the largest in history we've got right now. And it, to me, it's all money that is earmarked and is, is well-intentioned on here with it. Pretty much everything in there I'll be supporting on there. But right along with that is public safety and still commercial development in the city on here. And the way I look at that is a commercial development, we have to have to increase the tax base as well as providing new jobs, industry, so we can get young people to settle and remain in the city. How that gets you into housing on here. We have a dire need both for trying to think on here, accessible housing as well as market rate housing. Both of those are needed on here. And I'll certainly support both of those any ci- ci- city endeavors as far as bringing those forward on here for the public safety on here. The biggest thing is I see we have in the budget, we're going to hire, I believe, a six new police officers, six or eight on here for, and that's all well on here. Right now, as far as the, as I said earlier, residents are afraid to go out at night on the streets, they're afraid to walk. Maybe what we need is more police overtime on here, just for what you call regular police patrols and maybe increased use of the test units on here with it. So kind of the overall city issue is to me, they percolate right down into what's important in District Seventeen out here. Far as I'll keep, I'm still harping on the library on here. We need a place, a public meeting place for people in District Seventeen. There is nothing available, a large area for, say, an assembly or something on there as well as breakout rooms for little neighborhood groups. And I think I pretty well covered it right there, Alder, on here. If you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Joe. Our next question will come from Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. So this one is also a little bit long. So here goes. You receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the district. Your general sense is sixty percent are against the project and forty percent in favor of the project. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? What steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
Okay, thank you on here. This is another of these multi-part questions on here. But the first thing of all is you've got to have communications back and forth on here. You have to reach out to your neighborhoods, any type of a neighborhood associations. I, as an Alder, the first thing I do is is try and have a meeting, which as I previously stated, is quite hard to do in District Seventeen. There's no meeting places. But we could probably go out of the district and do something on there. Once you have this meeting on there, you need to cover at that exactly what is the benefit of whatever this is you want to do. Policy change, new goals, and maybe just priorities as an Alder. You have to explain to people why there's a need for it and how what you're proposing would benefit, would bring a positive change with it on there for it. And above all, be a good listener to your your constituents on there. And of course, the other thing I think helps a lot on there is, say, I'm the interim Alder on here. We do have an Alder website and I plan to use that extensively on there. For the, the only thing is there, I'm not sure everybody can access or is aware of that Alder website on here. That gets us back to public meetings. Any type of kind of a fact-finding, nothing we can do. So that's pretty much how I'd try to convince people of what I'm pushing for that's good for the city and also good for District Seventeen.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Thank you, Joe. Our next question will be from Alder Heck.
Thank you, and thanks, Joe, for, for applying. This question perhaps flows from the previous one. How do you reach District Seventeen residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Right. Well, right, right now, Alder, that's a tall order because the Claridown Hills Homeowners Association has been active for years and Greater Sandberg Neighborhood Association, I'm members of both. And that has been active now inactive for probably two to three years. There really isn't a working neighborhood association out here. So the best thing we can do is we have to have public meetings and possibly mailings with that. I want to go back again to the Alder website on here. Somehow we have to be able to reach out everyone out there. And the best way is try written communication, mailings on here. And then also try and have a public meeting, provided we can locate a site for it on there. And other than that, I just plain say my word of mouth on here, people I talk to and things on here for it. I, I know a number of people in our neighborhood. I do get around our neighborhood on here. And I'll certainly take, take the time to have a conversation with any constituent out here. Even if we don't agree necessarily on it, we will communicate. So I think that's pretty much, that would be my approach, Alder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So thanks, Joe. We're going to go on to our next candidate, Sabrina Madison. Sabrina, welcome back. I'm sorry, Alder Conklin has her hand up. And before I let Joe go, I made a promise and I assume she's holding me to that. Alder Conklin, I assume you have a clarifying question or?
Oh, that part. And then I was just going to ask you for like a minute or two, just so I myself can score personally, like each one, you know? Give me a second to just calculate my.
Take a breath. Yep. Absolutely. And, and did you have a question about something in particular that Joe said that you wanted clarification on?
I did have one question, actually.
Okay.
Just get, get to my notes real quick. Okay, so Joe. I have a clarifying question about, you did bring up the, the part about hiring the six new police officers. And I wasn't quite sure where your stance was. I know you said you, you wanted to give the police officers more overtime, but can you clarify where you stand, whether you support or not support of hiring the six more police officers?
Alder, Alder, I want to, before, Joe, before you answer, Alder, I think I want to be careful about asking people direct policy questions. I think, I, I think we haven't traditionally done that in the past. If people volunteer that information through their testimony, there's nothing we can do about that. But I think that this process and these questions are more designed to better understand people's backgrounds and what's important opposed to asking them how they're going to particularly vote on something.
Well, I wasn't asking how he was going to vote. I was just wondering if it was important to him. I don't think he made that clear. Or if he did, I didn't hear that part. If he was clear on wanting that or not wanting that wasn't necessarily a vote of how he was gonna vote. It was just clarified.
Sure. So hang on, Joseph. But I think, I think, Joe, hang on one second. I think, I think that is though, asking him how he would vote if, if that came up. And I'd really prefer we didn't do that.
Okay, then.
Sorry. If, if anybody has an objection and wants to talk about that a little bit more, we can. But I really don't want us to be making a decision, you know, tonight on, on specific votes if we can avoid it. All right. So Alder Conklin. So thank you, Joe. Sorry. I'm going to give Alder Conklin one moment to breathe so she can get her notes together. Sabrina, you're up next. So also take a deep breath and we'll be with you in a moment. Alder Conklin, if you want to just give me a thumbs up when you're ready, I'll go ahead and resume. Thank you, Alder Conklin. Sabrina, welcome back. We're going to start you out with our first question from Alder Abbas. Alder Abbas, are you with us? Doesn't seem like, it seems like he may have stepped away for a moment. Try Alder Boss. I'm going to go ahead and ask you the question since Alder Boss is not with us. Alder, so your question, the question is, what knowledge, skills and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim Alder?
Thank you. And just to be sure, you can still hear me well because I'm getting the spectrum potential outage text messages.
Yes, we can hear you. I do know in your, in the first round, there was a word or two that got dropped, but it wasn't enough for us to not understand your meaning. So hopefully that doesn't happen with this longer period, but we'll certainly let you know if that's the case.
Okay, thank you. All right. So what knowledge, skills and resources do I already possess that will help me become an effective interim Alder? First, I have an excellent track record of acting as a liaison between the community, the committees I currently serve on and the City of Madison staff that are in direct communication with those committees. Next, I have extensive participation in the development and implementation of various agendas such as those addressing access to affordable housing, homelessness, student safety, inclusion in the arts and justice involved juveniles, both as a board member, committee member and the founder and CEO of the Progress Center for Black Women. I also have an excellent track record of educating myself about topics while being immersed in citywide issues and or controversial policy topics. And then distilling that information to the community while also taking information from the community to the decision makers, being sure to always be absolutely serving as a bidirectional liaison. I have a history of encouraging elected officials to make equitable decisions and advance policy issues important to the people I'm in regular community with, along with the rest of Madison. One of the skills that I possess is that I have led and created both for-profit and nonprofit businesses. So I have a strong understanding of budgetary and financial projections. I'm also a strong community navigator, and this shows up time and time again in how I'm able to navigate conversations, even when there are computing, competing views around an issue. I'm a strong project manager and my strategic planning skills even led me to opening up the Progress Center for Black Women on the top of the square. I'm a strong relationship builder and the relationships I've built with other residents in my district, business and nonprofit leaders, neighborhood police officers, elected officials at all levels of government, educators, nurses, coaches and more, will absolutely help me to serve in an effective and inclusive manner. Now I'm in a position where I have the full and part-time staff at the Progress Center to adjust my schedule as needed. So I'm making myself available to folks in my district as well as the support of so many commit, like, community members in this city that I, it'd be pretty much easy for me to access what I need and who I need in order to do the job effectively, but more importantly, efficiently. So.
Thank you, Sabrina. Our next question will come from Alder Conklin.
Hi, Sabrina.
Hi.
This is kind of a long one. So let me know if you need me to repeat it at any time. Please describe the way that you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion. And how would you model these practices in this assignment? Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion and racial justice.
Thank you. I got it because I'm excited about this one because I get to share, I get to share a solution that is directly to this. So an example that I can give you is an action that would demonstrate both equity and inclusion. These are words that are used frequently and thrown around without much action being tied, tied to them. So some time ago, I identified racist treatment of a black young girl in our local school district. When the issue became public and widely shared, what I saw happen next was really a mess. There were many really, really well-intended folks who wanted to discuss the matter, and they did so. They discussed it across social media. They discussed it in the news and they discussed it in closed-door gatherings. Folks were angry, understandably so, but it also seemed that things had come to a sort of boiling point, not just in our local Madison School District, but the surrounding school districts as well, as far as how black children were being treated across these districts. There were competing ideas about how to resolve these issues coming from parents, from educators, from law enforcement, from nonprofit leadership and the leadership within the school districts themselves. So pretty quickly, as always, I'm able to do over and over again, I decided to step up and organize a large forum so that collectively we can come together to talk about and come up with an action plan. So I facilitated this meeting, which parents, frontline staff from local organizations and school districts, students from high school to college, I think even middle schoolers, teachers, community members, elected officials and more, just, just about every portion of Madison was in that room. That discussion ended with importantly, clear action items for the problems identified. I gathered several volunteers after that meeting who came together to organize what was shared from the forum. Because during the forum, I asked folks to really be able to sort of record their thoughts, their feedback, even like what is absolutely making them angry on large white sheets of paper. So after that forum, I gathered the volunteers together, they organized that information, put it on a spreadsheet where it laid out clearly what the issues were and the solutions that folks sort of had come up to address those matters. But more importantly, what does not often happen in our city is that the information is not made publicly. So oftentimes folks are having to reinvent wheels to make decisions about things that we already know the answer to. So I got those volunteers together, they organized the information and I made that spreadsheet public, publicly available to anyone. It is still publicly available to anyone. And the issues and action item list that has that, that issue and action item list has been used by a number of people in our community who are well-known in the community to create their own initiatives. And even that was a foundation for folks opening up new organizations and starting new prob, or new programs because the sheeting of itself in that conversation were able to identify several, probably more than several service gaps. So and also I furthered my understanding of equity, inclusion and racial justice by just simply taking active steps to authentically build relationships with a number of community members, for example, even in the Latinx community, so that I could better understand their needs and how to amplify each other's voices and how to best partner. I've also done the same with other communities who have historically not been authentically included. And I feel fortunate, I literally, I just, I super felt fortunate, super fortunate to be able to count many of those folks I've built these relationships with as close friends and more importantly, as advisors. Because even though I, I, you know, I'm born into a group of marginal people who are historically been marginalized, I just think it's important that we have to build these relationships and lean on each other because we can't make assumptions just because, you know, we are from a certain group of people. So the end of it, I just got to say, I feel fortunate again to count many of these folks as close friends and advisors. And I want to reiterate that that document is still a living document and it's available to anyone who wants it. And I, that's one of the things that I'm most proud of, that we took a situation that was very chaotic and turned it into something that was very solution-focused. And that led to real results for folks being able to start new programs, get those programs funded and open up well-known organizations here in the city. So that's my piece.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Foster.
Hey, good evening, Sabrina. Same question I asked Joe. What are some of the critical issues facing District Seventeen? And what are some of the critical issues facing the city?
Yeah, I'll talk about them both and, and try to separate here and there, but a lot of the issues facing District Seventeen, of course, also affect the city, citywide. But more importantly, from both speaking with community members in my district, but also being someone who's just always been really involved in spaces that strive to create collaborative and effective solutions, and then having the many relationships across the city. I know one in my district, for example, especially in recent conversations with residents of District Seventeen, that affordable housing for elders in our district, especially those who are on fixed incomes is definitely an important matter and it needs to be addressed. There is no centralized space for elders in our district. So a lot of them, of course, they're excited to see what will come of the Imagination Center, for example, at Rindel Park because of it. Our, our immediate area is also dealing with, you know, a rise in crime, especially over there in the East Town area. There have been neighborhood break-ins and it does cause folks to, to experience some level of fear. And then we do have the new shelter, the temporary shelter that opened up in our area recently. And there's some concern about folks who may be at the shelter and what kind of neighbors they'll be as they are, you know, finding space for themselves to be safe from the cold weather. And so there is a concern between East Town community business folks and the folks who call or recall the shelter home at minimum overnight. And so I am excited though, during that visit that I had at the shelter, that I got to see that there is some work being done to try to build healthy relationships so that shelter residents feel comfortable, just as well as the East, East Town business community feels just as comfortable. And then talking to neighbors, even outside of my door here, there's lots of drag racing. So drag racing is a consistent concern that's being shared. Traffic concerns overall, but including speeding, drag racing, pedestrian safety. There are a couple of neighbors who have to catch a city bus, for example, to go and get dialysis treatment. And they are, they have this fear of just being able to cross the street. So even something as simple as just addressing how easily and safely folks can cross street, across the street is an, an important issue. And then our area, especially over where we have the motels, you know, right before you get on the freeway, there are folks who are having drug overdoses. There are folks who are experiencing being traffic or sex trafficking over there. Coming from someone who grew up or not grew up in one of a very, very low-priced motel or hotel. I also know that a lot of folks that they're, they're struggling and you oftentimes have people who are just down on their luck and they need somewhere to sleep for the night. And so we do got to figure out how to address, you know, these issues with folks who are suffering from drug overdoses, there's the trafficking, but there's also folks who are experiencing untreated mental health concerns in our district, which also the rest of the city is experiencing it. So things like extending AODA services and mental health treatment are two things that are very much needed. And I think a good number of folks in my district have at least at minimum shared those concerns with me. So where we're dealing with affordable housing issues, a lack of space for elders to just be in community with, with each other, drug overdoses, mental, or lack of mental health treatment. We're dealing with those issues in our district, but those are also issues that the rest of the city, the city is dealing with and issues that I've been involved in helping to resolve, or at least lending my voice or my time to help resolve them over the years.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you. Okay, so Sabrina, you received a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the, in your district. Your general sense is that sixty percent are against the project and forty percent in favor of the project. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? What steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
Yeah, so this is where I thrive. Yeah, so this is where I thrive, bringing people together, especially folks who may not absolutely get an invite to be in a space. So very much like the earlier example I've got after I created that forum. So similar to that, I would create a forum to bring together district residents right away. Of course, we would include police and fire, we would include community center staff, we would include educators and frontline staff for the schools who are right here in our district. We'd include, you know, neighborhood leadership, support staff from our local schools and other key stakeholders. But more importantly, I would bring these folks together in a strongly facilitated meeting with very clear ground rules. Based on that first neighborhood meeting, I would then work on bringing them together again to discuss what the common ground might be, you know, just being able to synthesize the information from the first meeting and reporting out to this next meeting, and then create, just really create some specific, I guess, share these specific concerns that our neighbors have shared with each other and address them in a way where we're not, you know, yelling at each other, but we're effectively sharing our concerns, our solutions, and our compromises. So literally, I would take that forum information, analyze it, bring it back to that second meeting, and just share out to say, hey, this is what we as a community, as residents of District Seventeen had to say. These are some of the solutions and some of the compromises that we've come up with together, just being adamant about sharing that this is sort of like not one-sided, but we've collaboratively and collectively come up with this. None of us will get everything that we want until we get what we need. I would make sure that the project is moved forward after, you know, of course, using how the community is leading me. I would make sure that the project is moved forward based on the needs of the residents and the city. And at the end of it, again, reiterated that we may not get a hundred percent of what we want, but the final decision will be everyone was able to sort of like give their input. I'll share the rationale around my support for whichever, you know, projects have decided to move forward, and of course, share how their engagement helped to shape the solutions and/or compromise. So at the end of the day, it really would not be too different, except for the fact that I'd be just a bit more adamant about getting out in our district, in our community centers, in our schools within our district, and finding those folks wherever they're hanging out at, whether we're at Mercy's Coffee House, whether we're at the restaurant up the street, or we're at the East Madison Community Center. I would just go to where those folks are at, where they congregate, bring them together to be able to collect that information, report back out to them, and help them understand that they've been part of this decision-making process. And hopefully, they'd understand like the rationale based on my support for how we would, you know, collectively determine to go in either direction.
Thank you. Our, no, our next question will be from Alder Hack.
Hi Sabrina. This next question you've kind of touched on already, but I'm hoping you'll have, you'll be able to expand on what you've said already. How do you reach District Seventeen residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Yeah, and this is too where I thrive, finding people who don't traditionally, they don't get the newsletter, they are not on social media even, for example. But just some of the general standard things that I would do would hold regular office hours. Thankfully, I now have the staff to be able to adjust my own schedules in my day-to-day at the Progress Center to make myself available either, you know, during the day, during the evening, or on weekends. But I will also hold meetings and rotating spaces, because what I've learned is that folks go where they're comfortable, they go where they know community, they go where they feel like they may be wanted and appreciated, and they don't, you know, they may not feel like they want to stand out. So those meetings would not happen at the same place all the time, but in spaces where I feel I get a sense that community members want to hold community at. I will also attend events. There's lots happening in our district, especially over in the school. I'm excited about going to something on Saturday. But I will attend the events because just getting out, talking to folks, you learn so much about what their wants and what their needs are that it sometimes is just simply just getting out, talking to folks, going to garage sales, for examples. I will go to community centers to engage with people formally. It literally would just be this day-to-day getting out and just using my circles of influence to engage community members who I may not be able to reach. So for example, when I first announced that I would be, that I wanted to take part in this process, I had tons of people who reached out to me, people who I had not even known that lived in my district, for example. And in turn, those folks connected me, each individual likely connected with me with five more people who I would have not known on my own. And especially, it is through those connections that I even realized and learned about seniors, for example, not having a centralized space for them to be a community with each other just day-to-day. So it's really just going to be getting out, it's going to be bringing people together in spaces that other folks may not altogether turn to all the time. It's going to be just getting out, attending events, and talking to people. One of the things that I'm absolutely great at is networking, 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 networking. I will find you before you find me, most likely. So.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sabrina. Are there any clarifying questions? Okay, thank you Sabrina. I'm gonna give, I think I'm gonna use Alder Conklin as a good gauge. I'm gonna give Alder Conklin a moment, and as well she's doing that, hopefully everybody else will also put their notes together, and then we'll move on to our next candidate. So everybody can take a deep breath, fill out their notes, and Alder Conklin, give me a thumbs up when you're ready, and if anybody else needs more time, just let me know. Thank you, Alder Conklin, and welcome back. We're gonna start you out with our first question coming from Alder Abbas.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Anne. What knowledge, skills, and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim order?
So, I'll say right off that, my background is in human resources in a number of ways. I am often working in situations where I am building coalitions. I am actively listening to concerns, actively working to solve complex issues. And all of that experience would help me be a very competent elder for our, for the constituents that I would be serving. I have a lot of experience with change management. I recently finished a master's degree in that area, which has given me even more tools and ways to engage people. And I'm used to having tough conversations, I'm used to getting in front of groups and speaking about tough things that are going on, tough issues that we're dealing with, and listening. And I'm one of those people that I understand if somebody is upset, that is not necessarily a bad thing, because somebody that's upset and takes the time to actually seek out your elder or your representative to tell them what they, what they're upset about, that means they're engaged. And that's the biggest part of this, is making sure that our community is engaged in what's going on, and I would do my best to continue that work. I've also got a lot of experience with conflict management. I'm used to dealing with big formal meetings. I understand how, I always joke, I understand how Robert's Rules work, which is always fun. And just understanding those processes will also bring me, bring a lot of experience to this. And I have connections in the community. Like I've said, I've been around this community for many years. I was involved in the school. I was the chief inspector for our ward here over at Streets East for a long time, and now they're over in Acusa Trails. For a lot of time, I was meeting the community and making sure they're they're able to vote and spending the time getting people into those voting wards and making sure people could get the access to vote. It's actually a big concern that there's a lot of people out there that don't understand how voting works and how they can participate. And getting, even getting to a voting place in the city sometimes can be difficult, and explaining what you need to register to vote, and making sure people have the tools to get to be able to register to vote. Those are huge barriers for a lot of community members, and that's something that I've always worked on. And so I can use those experiences too as well to reach out to community members and continue my outreach.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Alder Conklin.
Thank you. And President Furman, it cut out on my end when she said she had a master's in what I did not hear because it cut out. Is it okay if I just ask what it was?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. The official title is organizational change leadership, but I did say change management at that time.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. And I will go ahead and read the second question. Please describe the way you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion, and how you would model these practices in the assignment. Please provide an example of measure you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion, and racial justice.
Thank you. This is probably the most important question of all the questions here today. I, again, I will fall back on what my career has been, but I have worked on EDI issues for countless number of hours, especially within, in my experience with recruitments and removing the barriers to make sure that people are able to apply for positions, whether, and that means, you know, really rethinking how we're looking for employees and what are kind of underlying barriers are we putting in place which we aren't even conscious of. So, looking at how we're advertising positions, how are we avoiding the people that look like us? And because that often comes into play, it's the affinity, you know somebody or you know their background, and so they come from the same school or something like that. And really working on removing those biases in those processes so that we are bringing a diverse pool and a diverse workforce, so that where I work are at a library. The librarians that are there represent the community that they serve, which should happen. I have a number of experiences with PTA, working with different families, arranging community nights, arranging days where we just, everybody brings their favorite dish from wherever they are from and bringing that forward. Having things like movie nights, which was amazing to me that how it brought a lot of people that usually wouldn't come to events, bringing them into the same space that didn't happen before, and just taking the time to say, hey, introduce yourself to somebody that's sitting next to you. We made a point of doing that, so people could meet each other and get to know each other. I have worked a lot on removing barriers for sorry, for people with disabilities in a lot of our searches. So going back to my experience as a recruiter, how are we looking at people making sure we're, sorry, let me start that sentence again. How we're looking at how they have access to positions, what that means. Making sure that they have questions ahead of time so that you can remove some of the anxiety for people who have those hidden disabilities and mental health issues. Giving them the questions like you did ahead of time absolutely reduces the amount of stress for a number of people. Making sure we're offering a lot of additional space so that people can talk about what they need going into a workspace. As for kind of more formal work that I've done, I have attended countless numbers of equity and diversity training. I recently, earlier this year, I attended a racial equity institute program that was just absolutely eye-opening to me. I've always known that we do have systematic racism issues with our ordinances, our laws across this country in so many ways that we don't even realize it anymore. Some of them are so hidden that we don't even realize that they play a role. And that program really opened my eyes to even more of that and allowing me to understand that even better. And that's part of the reason why I applied for this position is because I really truly do care about creating an equitable environment, celebrating the diversity, the generation that's growing up right now is the most diverse than we have ever had. And we need to celebrate that and make sure that all of them have equal opportunity to do what they need to do and thrive in our communities. And so, like I said, a lot of things I want to focus on is removing barriers that prevent people from being the person that they want to be in this community, celebrating our diversity, and again, recognizing that a lot of our a lot of our work has been based on many things that we don't even realize that there's institutional racism involved. And I want to work on seeing what we can do to remove them. I know it's not an easy process, but I'm here to do the hard work. And I guess, sorry, the one last thing I would talk about too is that what I've learned over the past decades is holding myself accountable for these experiences and saying when I've messed up and taking that experience, learning from it, and trying to do better. We have microaggressions, there's microaggressions everywhere in many things that we do, and many of us don't intend to do it, but we do. And we need to be holding ourselves accountable for that and making sure that we learn from that and moving forward, do more, do better.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Foster.
Good evening, Anne. My question is, what are some of the critical issues facing District Seventeen and what are some of the critical issues facing the city?
So thank you. Sorry, it's like a lot of the things that have been already talked about by the other candidates. I know that District Seventeen, we do have the men's shelter that has been a real concern for a number of members in the community, and I know there has been a lot of voices on both sides for that. And the library, the new library, I'm very excited about because I do think there is an access issue for that, and I am all about removing barriers to education and to access to the services that they need to thrive. So those are a couple of things. One thing that I did notice, or not even notice, but in discussions with my friends who are teachers, COVID brought out a lot of experiences and a lot of issues that we hadn't recognized really. Well, we knew of them, but it just highlighted how important they were. For instance, food insecurity in the area that I live in over here, you wouldn't think that's necessarily a issue. It's a middle-class area. Most people own their homes. But it really is an issue, and there was a lot of discussion about how we are making sure that students who no longer got those two at breakfast and lunch at school because they weren't in the building, making sure that they had what they need to, to be at home and have access to food. Those are kind of things that we, that were really highlighted at that period that I think we can need to do moving forward. And just access in general. I know that in some areas around here, transportation to medical facilities and other food, groceries, other things can be difficult for people who don't, who aren't able to drive themselves or relying on others. And how are we helping them get to the services that they need? As for the city, I think overall, as others have discussed, there's safety issues that have come into play. I agree that we have police, that we need police in our areas, but we also need to be thinking about what are the other things that are playing into this? Again, going back to access to services that we need. Should we be having more social workers? Should we be having these other tools that might help the police respond to the real emergencies and the emergencies that's needed there? And having social workers and other things to help deal with some of those other situations to avoid some of the concerns about that people, especially underrepresented populations, really face when they're having to interact with police or other other groups like police, the fire departments, and like making sure that they have, we can help provide them with a way where they feel safe to interact with that and with that community. I also recognize that our community is one of the, as I love Madison and I've been here for many years, but I do know that we are one of the most segregated cities in the area, and that's something we also need to address. And those are big issues that we're not going to solve tomorrow. Again, it's falling into a number of things that we may not even have control over at all. But we can take steps to do what we can to move those forward and make this a community where we are celebrating our diversity.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Figurocal.
Thank you. Hi, Anne, again. So you receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the district. Your general sense is sixty percent are against the project and forty percent in favor of the project. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? And what steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
So I think one of the hardest things about, at least what I perceive to be one of the hardest things is knowing what you believe and what you believe is right and balancing that with what your community members believe is correct. And I know that's going to be a struggle for me and pretty much much the work I do and I would do as an elder. And so it really is, my, my point is to make sure I'm hearing both sides, provide as the best way possible. And that's going to be a number of ways, a number of venues, a number of events, a number of community listening sessions to understand where people's concerns are and understand where they're coming from. And if they are on the opposite side of me, why? What are the holes? What are the, what are the things that they, that are really bothering them? Because again, we go back to an upset person is still an engaged person. And so we need to listen to them and understand where they're coming from. And then it's my, my responsibility to address those concerns to the best of my ability. And, you know, and really analyze what I'm doing. Am I creating the right outreach? Am I getting the right information out to people? So that they know that if I make a decision based on what I hear from all of them, that it's informed, that I have absolutely listened to what they said, and in the end has made the decision, which I think is going to fit the best with the constituents that I serve and the community as a whole. I know that's not going to be easy. And, and you know, you can't keep everybody happy. But I would hope that at least if I make a decision and they're not happy with me, they would at least know why.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Hack.
Hi, Anne. Your last question is, how do you reach District Seventeen residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
So this is a really great question as well, especially since there is no neighborhood association where I live. And so I think one of the basic points is to be as visible as possible, which means attending events, meeting with neighborhood associations, going to what's going on, you know, being involved in what's going on in the community, whether it's I have to wear a button that says, hey, Alder Seventeen, come talk to me when I'm at an event. Or reaching out in different ways, electronic ways such as a blog, such as emails, reaching out through mailers and things like that, and finding ways that I'm engaging with the public that I maybe not even can perceive at this moment. But my main focus will be staying visible, being out there, being involved in the community, having discussions and finding ways that people can even reach out to me even passively, whether it's office hours, whether it's having an email list and sending out a survey saying, hey, this is going on, what do y'all think? You can do it without even telling me your name, you know, that I do that a lot in my work now. I have no problem doing that in the future as well. So it's really just being visible, being approachable and serving the constituents the best that I can.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions? Not seeing any. I definitely want to thank the candidates for making this a difficult decision. We're gonna all take a few minutes to vote and rank. If anybody has any issues or problems, let me know and we will resume momentarily. Just waiting for one more vote. Okay, all the votes are in. I'm going to calculate the results. I want to thank again all the candidates this evening for participating. Really, really, really encourage you to continue to stay involved. As I noted earlier, and will do is send you a follow-up to tell you how to keep involved. I do want to let everybody know that the recommendation is Sabrina Madison. And congratulate Sabrina. Sabrina, if you wanted to say a quick thing, a quick word or to the committee, you're welcome.
I'm so excited, like, I'm just so excited. And I know I have like all this extensive community involved, but you guys don't know, my stomach was so in knots. But for me, that's a good thing. As a poet, as a, that's a good thing. So I appreciate y'all. My first thing is definitely I want to reach out to the, also the other folks who apply because I read each one of your applications and I think that each of you bring value. And so that's like literally my first order business is just to reach out to the, my co-applicants. Because as I said, I'm a networker to my heart and I just, I just definitely want to reach out to them because they're dope people too. So, but thank you, thank you. This was like so just, I could say a lot, so I won't. Because I know y'all are trying to be with me all night. So thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. We don't typically take comment, but, but Ken and if you do want to take a moment, you're welcome. Go ahead, you can address the committee.
I just want to say congratulations to Sabrina. I'm very excited for her. I knew that she would be very good at this job too. So congratulations and thank you for the time.
And I appreciate that. And I will be in touch because I know how to find you through your application.
Joel, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, congratulations, Sabrina. And I'll be glad to help you any way I can as a long-term resident on here. And I'm very, very pleased that we did have five people come out and apply for this. When Gary ran, we were wondering if we were even going to have a candidate two years ago. So best of luck to you, Sabrina, and I appreciate the committee here taking the time. It's been a good experience. So.
Thanks, Joel. And I'll be chatting with you again because it was good to chat with you in person recently too, so.
Again, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. So the next order of business for the evening, before I let everybody go, is item number three, legislative file seven four zero one zero, which is the referral that we had this evening for this appointment. Obviously now it has, has a title, a more real title, which is appointing Sabrina Madison as the older person for District Seventeen to serve until the spring twenty twenty-three election. Tomorrow morning in Legistar, it will be updated with the full verbiage that we've used for our previous vacancies. Does anybody here have any objections if I add all of the alders that are here tonight as sponsors of this? Okay, not seeing any. Can I get a motion for approval of this?
Move to approve of pro to refer to Sabrina Madison as District Seventeen elder.
Second.
Thank you both. Any questions, discussion? Unless I see otherwise, I will assume approval by anonymous consent. All right, thank you, everybody. And now I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Unless I see otherwise, I'll assume approval by unanimous consent. Have a good night, everybody. Thanks so much.
Good night.